Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Good evening. It's April 8th, 2025. Time is 6:35 PM. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Select Board for the Town of Hingham. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2, the Acts of 2225 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone recording? Seeing none, I will note for the record participating this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is approval of minutes. And I believe we have minutes from April 1st, 2025. Bill, Liz, are you prepared?
Yes.
I was not at that meeting, so I'll let you make the motion.
Okay. I'll accept a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes dated April 1st, 2025.
Second, roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next item on our agenda is to proclaim Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day in the Town of Hingham. And we have the proclamation here. Did we have anyone from Clean or Greener or any other organization that wanted to address us? Then we will proceed with the proclamation. Liz, you want to do the first two, and Bill do the second two, and I'll...
Happy to.
Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, Earth Day Proclamation. Whereas the Town of Hingham, as part of the global community, is participating in Earth Day 2025 and recognizes the environmental challenges faced by all people. And whereas it is understood that as citizens of the global community, the Town of Hingham must step forward and take action to create positive environmental changes that will support the management and care of our environment.
And whereas environmental education along with awareness helps the citizens of Hingham develop the concern and skills to address the environmental challenges we face. And whereas in recognition of today's environmental challenges, trees will be planted as a symbol to our commitment to the good stewardship of all that is entrusted to our care.
And whereas the Town of Hingham pledges to support environmental and educational initiatives in our community that encourage others to undertake similar actions. Now therefore, we, Joseph M. Fisher, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day, dated this 8th day of April, 2025. I am prepared to accept a motion on this.
I'm making a motion to proclaim Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We now move on to proclaim April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the Town of Hingham. And we can do the same, two, two, and then I'll finish up. Liz?
Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, Arbor Day Proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world.
And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And trees in Hingham increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community.
And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Hingham, Massachusetts, has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now therefore, we, Joseph M. Fisher, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day. In the Town of Hingham, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, support our town's forestry program... Second, roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Catching you at a bad time, Bill. My apologies. Okay. We should have a water bottle day. We now move on to consider the agreement with Tough Stuff Recycling LLC for mattress recycling services for the Town of Hingham's mattress box spring recycle program. David, are you going to do this? Or is Ashley online?
Also online.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Ashley?
Hi.
How are you?
I'm doing better.
Are you reclining on a mattress that needs to be recycled? Because we happen to have a vendor that's very good at that.
Absolutely.
So please just walk us through the proposed arrangement.
David, do you want... Are you going to do that, or do you want me to?
David, go.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. So this is, as you mentioned, for a mattress and box spring recycling services with Tough Stuff. We are currently in a 12-month contract with them that is set to expire on May 22nd. So now this would be a new contract. And they did send over two options, so you should have option one and option two, just in case for discussion. But the contract here reflects option one, which is a two-year contract with a one-year renewal at $31 per unit, which is what we are currently in now. And then that's for 24 months. And if we were to go with a one-year renewal, it will stay locked in at the $31. Option two would have been a one-year contract at $32 per unit, and then the additional year would be at 33. So with that being said, the preferred option is option one. And with Tough Stuff Recycling, the mattress and box spring recycling program is recommended. They are on the OSD contract, and they've been a reliable vendor for us. And this funding is out of the operating recycle with DPW. But if there's anything that I did miss, my colleague Ashley can jump in.
So when I take a mattress to the... I'll call it the dump. Maybe that's not the politically correct term here. Is this... I have to pay a fee to do that? And is this the company that then receives, that has the big unit up there that we put the mattress in?
So we have a container up at the transfer station that residents come and residents pay $20 to dispose of a mattress or a box spring. And then we then turn around and pay this company $31 per mattress, per box spring, to take it to be recycled.
So we have a built-in deficit for this? Is that common?
So we are on the lower end. All the towns around us are at a break-even point of it. It's a topic I'd like to address.
Okay, so I mean, that's not... The contract can stand, and we can look at the policy going forward. The pricing, is that competitive?
Yeah, the pricing is very good pricing. Other companies, they'll charge upwards of $45 per mattress.
Because my understanding is it's actually state law. You can't throw a mattress in the dump, if you will. It has to be recycled.
Absolutely.
Yep. Liz, any questions?
Well, thank you, Ashley, and thank you, David, for presenting this. I'm assuming we don't foresee the fee going down, like the recycling fees going down in the near future. Is... I mean, is there a scenario, Ashley, where you could imagine that? I mean, just considering the larger economic... Sorry?
I don't see the fees going down anywhere in the near future, sadly.
Okay. Okay, and the total price is $100,000 for the two years?
That's correct, for the 12 months currently right now.
Or 12 months. It's the one year.
No, I'm sorry. For the 24 months for this contract is correct. The one that we are currently in now is a 12 months at $49,000.
Oh, so that is a... That covers two years?
This is for two years.
$100,000 is two years with an option to add on a third year.
That's correct.
Okay.
At the $31.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Bill, any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Ashley, just real quick. So if someone... When a resident needs to dispose of a mattress or a box spring, they'd go to the scale, correct?
Yep.
And their car would be weighed. But I mean, don't... When they go over to the...
Don't go to the scale.
I think they'd go to...
You'd go to the scale house to pay. That's where you'd go.
To pay, but there's no weighing.
Right, they'd go to the scales to pay.
Right.
Right, where it's scales to pay, right. But then, but when you dispose of the mattress or the box spring, does it... And it goes to the bulk waste area? Does it go into that giant... That giant container we have there, where everything else goes in, or is it kept separately?
No, there's a separate...
It's a segregated...
Big storage container. It's nearby the construction dumpster, the open-top construction dumpster.
Okay.
That's where all mattresses go into that because they don't... Because you can't recycle a wet mattress, so they have to go in there to stay dry.
Got it. Okay, all right. And obviously, I know you brought up a couple of times that we are losing money on this, so we'll have to have you back to talk about it, maybe possible restructuring of that fee.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Ashley, do you know approximately how many mattresses and/or box springs we receive each year?
We did, I want to say it was 2,424 in 2024. There's about 2,400 mattresses and box springs.
2,400. Okay, so... So we actually then should not be losing money. Because you've got a... As I understand, the contract, it capped at $100,000 over two years. And so that would handle... The $31 bucks at the rate you're talking about would be $148,000. But they're eating $48,000 there. So our fee is not the $31 because it's capped. It's up to $100,000. Am I correct?
Those are my numbers from last year, like the last fiscal year. Though I'm not 100% on that. I have to go back and double-check those numbers.
Yep. Well, so we know that...
Because we entered into that contract in May of last year.
Correct.
And so my numbers...
Can I just jump in? I think what's happening is you're probably signing a contract with a not-to-exceed of $100,000 in two years.
Right.
But you're paying $31 per unit.
Up to $100,000.
Right, but you don't have to pay $100,000.
Oh, I understand.
Right, so no matter what, you're losing $11 per mattress.
Like, if it's over... Like, we're in contract at that rate?
Right.
Or up to that amount?
Right.
So if we go over, like, we still have to pay.
Right. No, if you go over...
Like, if we hit $100,000 in disposing of mattresses?
Yep.
And then we still have more mattresses that need to be recycled, we still have to pay for them to be recycled.
At the $31 rate?
Yes.
So that's not a cap of $100,000. I thought we had a cap. This contract provides for...
We didn't reach the cap last year. I know that.
So my understanding of this contract is they cannot charge us anything more than $100,000, even if we have a lot of mattresses? Or am I not reading that correctly?
No, I mean, that's the $31 per unit and not to exceed $100,000 is what they... What the contractor signed.
Right.
So it's not a flat fee plus 31. It's $31 per unit up to $100,000.
That's exactly what the language says. So I guess my question is if we are approaching May, and the contract currently states $49,000, I'd kind of like to see where we're at now, if we were at the $31.
That's right.
You know?
So at $100,000 divided by $31, that means that'd be 3,225 mattresses over two years. Or you can cut that in half. That works. So that's about 1,600 mattresses a year.
Per year.
So if we... That's why I want to know where we're at. Because if we're above or below that, that would tell us if we're making money or not. But with respect to the contract, I think from what you've said, this is competitive. The pricing is good compared to what you've seen. I've looked at the contract. I'm satisfied with it.
The only thing I would ask is, David, when you're speaking with Tough Stuff, you remind them that the title on the contract should be for Ashley Sanford, the Director, DPW Superintendent, not Randy Silvestre.
Yes.
I will make that note.
I do have to say they've got a great corporate name, Tough Stuff. You can't do better than that. Okay, any other questions? Any member of the public with questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Tough Stuff Recycling LLC for mattress recycling services for the Town of Hingham's mattress box spring recycle program in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Second, roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Ashley, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
We now move on to consider the agreement with Air Care Environmental Services, Inc. for emergency repair work to the restrooms and hallway areas of the South Shore Country Club. And I know this was a recent addition to the agenda because of an emergency there. Is Kevin... Yes?
Here. Good evening, everyone.
Hi. Could you just give us an update in the reason that we need to have this contract?
So on the 23rd of March, we had a claim, an insurance claim, where we had surge back up into the ladies locker room that went into the hallway and subsequently into the men's room. So we had to call Air Care in, who is a restoration company on that day. And we also had to call in Holby to clean out the lines. I had a plumber there all day, and they weren't able to clear the line. So at the end of the day, we had a backup. And then Air Care is a company that did the restoration, cleaned out the mess, removed the carpets, and also we had to cut up two feet of the drywall to ensure that we didn't have any mold grow and that. So this contract basically will restore the premises. It is an insurance claim, so we have a $25,000 deductible, which the country club will cover. And then the Air Care will get paid the remainder of the contract from the insurance company. I wanted to thank David and Tom Mayo. For we went through the state procurement to get an emergency... The ability to provide, you know, the emergency relief here. So we did not have to go through normal bidding. But at the same time, this is again an insurance claim, so anything over the $25,000, the insurance company is covering.
Did we need to run this by the insurance company? Did they... For example, some insurance...
Yeah, they've approved the claim.
Okay. But have they approved the vendor? Some insurance companies have preferred vendors?
Yes, yes, they have.
Okay, great.
They... Yeah, when they came out, they said they work with this particular company all the time.
I mean, it's terrific in these not-terrific circumstances, so appreciate your being on top of this.
Yeah. Well, I thank everyone for cooperating and, you know, trying to get this done. Obviously, we're heading into the height of the season and where, you know, everyone has to use the bowling alley bathrooms at this time, so it's not ideal. And we want to make sure that we can get this up and running as quickly as possible.
Tom, did you want to add anything?
No, Kevin did a great job of managing this and bringing everyone together and getting it passed the way it needed to at the state and the insurance office.
Liz, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Kevin, for doing this so quickly. So do you think they'll be able to do the work by May 15?
Yes, you know, absolutely.
Okay, great. No other questions. Thank you.
Bill?
No questions. Kevin, appreciate your quick response to everything. I know it was a tough situation.
Thank you.
David, anything you wanted to add?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Any member of the public? I'm prepared to accept a motion.
I'm making a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Air Care Environmental Services Incorporated for emergency repair work to the restrooms and hallway areas of the South Shore Country Club in an amount not to exceed $71,407.64.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. True. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
We now will be considering appointment of liquor enforcement officers, where we have two potential candidates. These positions filled and why we should fill them with these officers?
Our W Chief Ryan, for the Hingham Police Department. And Sergeant Lucas and Sergeant Brady work the overnight shift, so we need to eat. I'd like to appoint them as liquor enforcement officers. Currently, our detectives are the liquor enforcement officers, and they work a mix of days and evenings, but we don't really have any coverage on overnights. So that's not to say an officer can't take a report overnight or investigate something, but we wanted to just have a little extra enforcement capability. There's been no specific issue, but it's just kind of future planning. We have a large number of liquor licenses we do have in town. So these two sergeants, along with detectives, do attend AB/CC training on the 31st, two weeks ago, where rules and regulations and laws were gone over. And, you know, we just like to have that extra enforcement capability on the night shift.
So they have gone through the training?
Yes.
Great. Well, I've spoken to our police chief, and he highly recommends these two officers and confirms that these appointments are necessary for the efficient operation of the police department. So I'm satisfied. Liz, any questions?
Well, I'm glad to hear that the chief recommends this. I didn't doubt that, but nice to hear that. It sounds like a good plan and a good approach to have the additional liquor license agents. Is there any additional budget required to support this?
No, not at all. The training was free, and there's no... They don't receive any extra stipend or anything like that, so just part of their duties.
Okay, and why does the appointment run through October?
October is when we appoint our special officers and our liquor license enforcement officers. So figured we could just appoint them through October and then reappoint everyone in one fell swoop.
Okay, then they'd be on the regular cycle.
No overlapping frames.
Got it. Thank you.
Bill?
No questions.
Any member of the public? Comments or questions? Hearing none, I'm prepared to accept a motion.
I will make a motion to appoint Sergeant James Brady and Sergeant Matthew Lucas as liquor enforcement officers in the Town of Hingham through October 31st, 2025.
Second, roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda are appointments or reappointments. Not sure we have any this evening?
No appointments, but I would note that we have received some talent bank inquiries. I think what we'll probably do is just hold the ones we're receiving and add those to the interview list that we usually do generally in early June. So one of the people know we're not ignoring those inquiries. We're just going to do them all when we do our bank interviews in June.
And to encourage folks to continue submitting their applications. It's nice to see such interest, and we have an important need for volunteers. So please, please continue to support the town through volunteerism. Next, an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda. Do we have any... I think we may have lost, and the people who watch the recording can't really participate right now. So now we move on to Select Board Town Administrator Reports, and I am going to break protocol by starting rather than ending. And I have one item that I want to talk about. Last Thursday, April 3rd, many of us were privileged to watch and listen to the retirement ceremony held in Alexandria, Virginia, for Bill Ramsey, a Lieutenant Colonel in the U.S. Army Reserve. We heard much about Bill's 28 years of military service, including his active duty as an officer in the Judge Advocate General's Corps attached to the U.S. Army's 82nd Airborne in Afghanistan. During Bill's retirement ceremony, we heard from generals, we heard from colonels, we heard from civilians, who all praised Bill for his leadership, his legal skills, and his kindness as a person. But I wanted to learn more about Bill Ramsey, the guy who was receiving all these accolades. So after the ceremony, I did a Google search, and here's what I found.
I'm sure you found a lot.
Here's what I found on Facebook. And I quote, "William Ramsey is an experienced professional with a solid history of success in the United States Army. He has an extensive background in logistics, strong ability to build and lead teams that meet and exceed designated goals and expectations. His job titles have included Operational Specialist, Operations Manager, Administrative Specialist, Data Entry Specialist, and Astrologer. He is currently working as the Chief Operating Officer at ZLB Astrology Tarot and Gifts located in Eureka Springs, Arkansas." Well, Bill is either working multiple jobs and has an alter ego, or this was the wrong Bill Ramsey.
You can't trust Facebook, Joe.
So I searched again. And I learned about Mr. Bill Ramsey, who is the Recruiting Operations Officer at the University of Scranton in Pennsylvania.
I get around. What can I say?
That was still the wrong Bill Ramsey. So I searched once more, and I found our Bill Ramsey, the Bill Ramsey who has served on Hingham's Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Recreation Commission, the July 4th Parade Committee, the Veterans Council, other committees, and of course, the Select Board. I learned about the Honorable William Ramsey, who joined the Social Security Administration as a U.S. Administrative Law Judge in 2011 and was appointed the Chief Judge of the Boston Hearing Office in 2012. I learned about Bill Ramsey as Executive Vice President of the Association of Administrative Law Judges, which represents more than 1,000 federal administrative law judges. which represents more than 1,000 federal administrative law judges engaged in adjudication at the Social Security Administration. I learned about our Bill Ramsey, who worked as an Assistant Chief Counsel for the US Department of Homeland Security, an Assistant District Attorney in Plymouth County, and as a prosecutor for the US Army Judge Advocate General's Corps. I learned about our Bill Ramsey, who served in both Iraq and Afghanistan and taught constitutional and military law on the faculty of the US Military Academy at West Point. But most importantly, I learned about Bill's philosophy on life and work. In 2020, Bill was quoted in the press as offering the following advice, and I quote Bill, "Always remember your ability is simply what you have been born with. Your drive to succeed, your work ethic, and integrity will determine what you do and how well you do it." So Bill, on behalf of the town, we honor your retirement from the military, and we are honored to continue to work with you as a colleague and as a friend. So thank you.
Thank you very much. In my, in my retirement from the Army, I hope to pursue a career in astrology.
There's a tarot card that's just waiting for you.
Thank you, thank you all for watching, I appreciate it. Nice to.
Liz, anything you want to?
Sure, no, it was an honor to be able to participate remotely and watch. So with great admiration and respect, Bill. Congratulations, Lieutenant Colonel Bill Ramsey. I loved hearing about your family legacy of service, and I loved how Adrian was honored for her service and sacrifice. It's certainly a family endeavor, but you have much to be proud of, and it is an honor to serve with you.
Great, thank you, it's an honor to serve both of you as well.
Tom?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I always thought I was lucky working with the three of you and your predecessors on this board in my nine years here. And, and I am lucky to do so, but I didn't realize how lucky I was sitting next to an actual, real-life American hero. Bill, thank you for everything you do for us here, but also for the country. It was humbling listening to those speeches at your retirement ceremony. It's, it's, it's really cool being, working with you, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Art?
Well, I'm not sure how I contribute further to that, other than to say as a, as a fellow retired Lieutenant Colonel, congratulations on carrying the, the flag for the nation for so many years. You, you deserve a great transition, and I wish you and your family all the best.
Anyone else have any other, anything to report? Then I am prepared to take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm an I as well, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call, or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the MyHingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the MyHingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play, or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree, or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using MyHingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments, and services. So why wait? Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.